Good evening and welcome, everyone. I call the November 7th City Council Meeting to order. And as a reminder, we are continuing to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And the first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I encourage you all to join the council and I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a lot of people in attendance tonight. And so if council meetings can be fun, these are the fun ones. We have some special business and some proclamations for tonight. I'm going to move over to the podium. So first, under Special Business, I would like to invite Fire Chief Jeff Clark to come up and join me. Right here, right here. So for those of you in attendance this evening and those of you at home, we are sad and excited that Fire Chief Clark will be retiring this month. It has been an absolute pleasure and honor to serve with him these last seven years. So I wanted to take a few moments to talk about Chief Clark and all of the great things we've been able to do. We have a couple of sitting council members right now who serve on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board. And at the time that our fire agency was looking to select a new leader, we did a nationwide search. And I was on the board at that time and got to participate and interviewed some really fantastic candidates. But we had done a lot of homework about what we thought the next steps were and where we needed to go. And we went through the interview process. It was very unanimous that we had one candidate who was going to get us to that next level. We had one candidate who knew how to develop a team for success, plan for succession planning, focus on regionalization, and really importantly, look at the service we're providing and the people we're providing it for, and talk about what else we can do to do a better job. I went down to Chandler, Arizona, where the chief was working at the time, with fellow Board Commissioner Chris Delene from District 38. Chris works for the Seattle Fire Department. I worked for local government. We thought, we're just going to pull this guy apart. We're going to go talk to people. We're going to get the intel. We're going to watch him in action. We were down for about a day and a half, and we verified everything that we had hoped he would bring to the table. He was an amazing development of leaders. We watched his team in action as they went through conversations on policy and presentations, unable to tell who was a staff member or a line worker and who was in the leadership ranks. The team was, it was amazing to watch, and we really wanted that here in Issaquah. The other thing that really captured me, being an engineer, is the work that the chief had done in the Arizona State Legislature to really talk about how we should be providing these services to people in need, and especially those populations that we call familiar faces or who are folks who are constantly in need of attention or assistance, but not because of an accident or acute medical industry, for other underlying conditions. And he won me over because he had all these charts and all this data that showed me that this was possible and this could be done. I remember getting a ride back to the airport from the chief because I had a later fight. I hadn't arranged it. We talked in the car. I got out of the car and I called the board chair and I said, Alan, do not mess this up. This is the person. Eastside Fire and Rescue needs. This is the kind of transformation, the inspirational leadership that we need. So I felt I had to tell you all of that because it also makes me really sad. I came into my leadership role in the same time, and Jeff has been not only a fantastic colleague, but a mentor and a friend. He's someone I could call 24 hours a day, which sometimes was necessary during COVID, just to walk me back and help me understand that we were going to make it through it, that the community was resilient, that we had a path forward, that we had a plan. So I'm really going to miss him. And I want to present him tonight, this recognition plaque from our city and our council and our community, just how grateful we are to have had the amazing Chief Clark for seven years. So congratulations on your time.
Would you like to sit here?
Yes, thank you. All right. She asked me to say a few words, so when my few words go, you know where it came from. First of all, that was very nice, Mayor, very generous. But the truth is, is that when, when I transitioned here to Eastside, it was a match. Not as much that she just described happened in Chandler, happened for me when I came to visit the communities here. It was a match, and that's what made this work. And I am very, very proud of what we've accomplished over the last seven years. It's not what I've accomplished, it's what all of us have accomplished. What the elected bodies, with the leadership of the mayor and Alan Gothill from, from North Bend specifically in the first three years, the way that the elected bodies came together under what we call the Unified Commitment to Eastside Fire and Rescue is only demonstrated today when you sit through an EFR Board meeting and you see how all five partners are working together in the same direction. So that's what all of you should be proud of, is what the leadership that you've allowed. And I have to thank each and every one of the elected officials that I've worked for over the last seven years to say that, I was talking with Ben Lane, who is going to be a wonderful fire chief, starting this Thursday. I know she said I'm retiring this month. It's Wednesday that I'm retiring. But Ben is going to be a wonderful fire chief. But I was talking to him today, and he said, well, what are you going to say tonight? And what are you going to say Wednesday when I talk to my elected board? And I said, I wanted to say one thing for sure, and I wanted to say thanks for never saying no. It is so easy in this world to say no to people who are working for you or with you. The easy path is no. In seven years, the truth is, my elected board never said no. They never said no to the initiatives that Eastside Fire and Rescue brought forward to you. There's reasons for that. There's a lot of reasons for it. But the biggest reason is true leaders empower and say yes, and get out of the way and let things happen. And I have been blessed over the last seven years to have that kind of support from our elected officials. You challenged appropriately. You challenged question, you asked me challenging questions, you asked my staff challenging questions. In the end, we got to yes on everything, and I hope that continues because that is how you build a system in a fire department that's going to work regionally for everybody, is to help everyone get to yes. So Mayor, I'm living in Issaquah still. I'm not going anywhere. You can still call me. I may not pick up 24 hours a day because that's, I am still looking forward to not checking emails and the phone and leaving it on 24 hours a day, but I'll be available. All right. Thank you very much.
So we have several proclamations this month, but the one I'm starting with first is ID 1301, the Hindu American Heritage Month Proclamation. And we have a lot of guests that are going to come up here and join me anywhere up here so that you can be seen on camera. So please come and join me while I go through the proclamation. I'm very excited to have you all here. And Dr. Shalinda, Shailendru will be speaking after I do. So come on, come on up over here. Let's try and get you all on camera one way or another. This is the biggest crowd we've ever had, but it's also really exciting, super exciting. So Hindu Heritage Month is celebrated every October, which coincides with major Hindu holidays such as Diwali. Whereas Hindu Americans in Issaquah represent a variety of ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Vajin, Caribbean, and European descent. And whereas we commit to embracing diversity and inclusion by paying tribute to Hindu heritage through education, acknowledgement, and celebration within our community, and the city of Issaquah is proud to recognize the positive influence of Hindu Americans on Issaquah's economic vitality, growth, and well-being. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim October 2022 to be Hindu American Heritage Month in the city of Issaquah. And I urge the community to join in special observance and celebration of Hindu heritage. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Shailendru, Saudi?
Saudi.
Okay.
You did it.
If you would like to say a few words, sure.
Sure, I will.
On behalf of Hindu American community, we accept and thank you, Mayor Lou Polly. City councilors and city staff are processing and awarding the proclamation during this festive season of Navratri and Diwali. This proclamation sends an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu American community in greater Seattle area and help educate all Americans about our incredible traditions. Over the last few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu Americans in region, and we have been contributing to all aspects of public life, to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. It would bring the resident immense pride and gratitude to know that the city recognized the contribution of Hindu Americans here. On April 23rd and June 21st, we organized Darshana, a poster exhibition on Hindu civilization in Saco Senior Center. This exhibition is to generate awareness about Hindu dharma, traditions, heritage, culture, and contribution to the world. We appreciate that City Council member Barbara Michelle joined the Darshana event and interacted with the community. I'm happy to share that the Hindu American community, in collaboration with various community organizations like HSS, SEWA USA, BAPS, WATA, TTA, many Hindu temples in the region, is engaged in driving a service initiative called SEWA Diwali, a food donation campaign during this festive season and contribute back to the local food banks and the underserved in our neighborhoods. Thank you again for proclamation, and we look forward to continued engagement with City Council on various community service initiatives.
Would you like to pose for a picture?
Yes.
Let's go over to the bigger area, see where you get a picture.
Thank you so much.
Of course, of course. Thank you so much for coming. This is fantastic. Okay, let's move this way. Council, would you like to join us? Fantastic. Yeah, go this way. We'll get the council. Fantastic. Excellent. We get, show them. I'm sure, so I get to go. I'm sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody yelled me.
There's fire code.
I know. Call me on Thursday.
Thank you so much for coming. Some more cameras. Yeah. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, thanks for coming. Oh, that's fantastic. This is, in our lobby, we, for the mayor's office, we have an area for all the different kinds of, this is fantastic. Thank you so much. That would be a picture. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you for making. Thank you for coming. Yeah, thanks for coming. Oh, that's fantastic. This is, in our lobby, we, for the mayor's office, we have an area for all the different kinds of, this is fantastic. Thank you so much. That would be a picture. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for making. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, thanks for coming. Oh, that's fantastic. This is, in our lobby, we, for the mayor's office, we have an area for all the different kinds of, this is fantastic. Thank you so much. That would be a picture. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for making. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, thanks for coming. Oh, that's fantastic. This is, in our lobby, we, for the mayor's office, we have an area for all the different kinds of, this is fantastic. Thank you so much. That would be a picture. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for making. 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 Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for making. 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 Yes, of course. Gatsby. And last but not least, AB 8487, oh, sorry, flipped over too fast, ID 1176, America Recycles Day Proclamation. And I'd like to invite public work staff to the podium. Oh, we do have somebody. Hi, Matt. Matt Alice from utility, our new, congratulations, utility engineering manager and solid waste coordinator is here to accept this proclamation. November 15th recognizes the 25th Annual America Recycles Day, a nationally recognized day for businesses, government agencies, and individuals to consider the importance of recycling and to commit to reducing waste. Whereas the city of Issaquah strives to reduce waste, conserve natural resources, prevent pollution, and save energy, these goals are advanced through a robust compost and recycling program. And whereas Issaquah is a leader in demonstrating the next generation of sustainability in the Pacific Northwest and serves as a model for innovation, collaboration, and effectiveness, in large part due to the Issaquah Sustainability Department, Solid Waste Coordination, and Environmental and Regulatory Program. And now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do recognize November 15th, 2022, to be Issaquah Recycles Day in the city of Issaquah, and to invite the community to join me in thanking Issaquah Sustainability and Environmental Department for their service and outstanding contributions. Thanks to the work of one of our city's consultants, friends of Lakes of Mammoth State Park and ecology, we should have recycling in Lakes of Mammoth State Park for the first time today on Issaquah Recycles Day. Matt, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Polly, and council and community members. And yeah, we have a dedicated staff that are really committed to providing recycling and composting and other ways to reduce waste in the city. So we're very excited to keep this going and within the city. Thank you.
And you know the routine. We're doing a presentation. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who joined us tonight for a proclamation. And that was the fun part of the meeting, so do not feel like you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'll be moving over to regular business next, but I also did want to tell the council that I really appreciate during the proclamations, we've had so many new city staff, and this is just such a wonderful way to say thank you and put a name to the face. And so I appreciate the time to be able to do these kinds of proclamations. So thank you all for coming. Yeah, I need that. Welcome back to the business portion of the business meeting. AB 8487, the Community Investment Strategy, Community Mobility Survey Projects. The ask of the council this evening will be to direct the administration. This item was originally scheduled for the October 17th regular City Council meeting, but due to time constraints, the item was moved to Special Business on tonight's agenda. Actually, that's right, we're not under Regular Business yet, we're Special still. I would like to invite management analyst Jean Paul to present this item. Jean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. My name is Jean Paul, and I'm the management analyst in the executive office. I'll be presenting tonight on the mobility projects that were part of the recent community The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the administration's funding recommendation The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the administration's funding recommendation for the mobility projects and receive the city council's direction on that proposal. The primary question from the administration is, does the council agree with the recommendation to fund the top three projects from the survey? Those projects are the bundle of transportation safety projects, the Front Street Streetscape, and Alder Festival Street with a combined cost of $1.59 million. As brief background, the administration first presented the Community and Investment Strategy at the June 27th and July 5th Council Meetings. This strategy was developed to implement the recommendations from the Capital Finance Community Task Force. One component of the strategy was the allocation of $2 million of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding for a community engagement process on smaller mobility capital projects. At the July 12 Mobility and Infrastructure Committee Meeting, the administration presented the plan for the community engagement and received the committee's direction on a number of its aspects. The committee agreed with the approach of utilizing digital public engagement with a short survey to prioritize a list of pre-selected mobility projects. The committee also endorsed the recommendation to include trail projects in the survey that provide connections to parks or neighborhoods. Finally, the committee directed that the survey results should be considered a recommendation and presented to the full council. The administration utilized the following list of criteria in compiling the list of capital projects. This list, which was also previously presented at the June and July Council Meetings, included eligibility for ARPA funding and the ability to be completed by 2024, projects that address quality of life and safety, that focus on transportation and trails, projects that are already vetted in the capital improvement plan, that address pain points across the city, and finally have a high impact relative to their cost. Using those criteria, the administration identified five projects for the survey. Those projects included a bundle of six small safety projects like crosswalks, road improvements, and a temporary bridge, constructing the next phase of the Front Street Streetscape that includes sidewalk improvements and landscaping along the west side of Front Street, designing the next phase of the Alder Festival Street project, including sidewalk, furniture, and landscape improvements, creating bicycle lanes at 220th Avenue Southeast, and finally completing a trail around Hillside Park on Squawk Mountain to connect the neighborhoods and the park. With the list of projects identified, the administration prepared a brief four-question survey. We asked people to rank the projects from most important to receive funding to least, to identify the main reason why they ranked projects the way they did, what neighborhood they live or work in, and finally to provide additional feedback in an optional open response. Overall, we had really good participation, with 402 people choosing to complete the survey. From their responses, there was a clear favorite project, as 50% ranked the safety bundle as the most important to receive funding. For the graphic on the screen, the ranking of 1 through 5 occurs from left to right across the bottom, and both the percentage and number of votes are on top of the bar The next two projects were also clearly ranked. As you can see, most of the votes for the Front Street Streetscape clustered around the number-two ranking, and the votes for the Alder Festival Street project clustered around the number-three ranking. For the remaining two projects, the results were fairly silver, with most of the votes indicating that respondents considered the bike lanes and Hillside Park Loop Trail as least important to fund. Based on these rankings, the administration did not include either of these projects in the final funding recommendation. For the question asking why people ranked the projects the way that they did, 42% indicated that safety improvements were their primary reason. Another 37% indicated that liking the features of the projects was their primary reason. Only 11% considered completing the most projects possible with the funding their most important reason, and just 6% highlighted the environmental sustainability as their chief reason. Finally, the remaining 4%, comprised of just 14 respondents, indicated that they had other reasons. The third question asked people to identify the neighborhood where they live or work. The Highlands represented the most responses with 27%. Old Town and Squawk were second and third with roughly 15% each, and the table on the slide shows the neighborhood breakdown for all the remaining responses. The final question asked if there was anything else that people would like to tell us about their selections. This was the optional open response question that 123 people, or 31% of respondents, chose to answer. All of the responses were provided at the city council last month, but I did attempt to identify some themes. As you can see from the slide, there was a wide variety of responses. Unsurprisingly, some continued the theme of support for safety improvements. There were comments both for and against bicycle improvements. Other responses included observations around the importance of gathering spaces downtown. And people also used this as an opportunity to comment on projects that were not part of the survey. These comments included advocating for improvements like crosswalks and sidewalks that were not on the project list, or advocating for different ways to address traffic congestion. The three projects originally totaled $1.48 million out of the possible $2 million. In light of lessons learned from recent construction work completed in Old Town, the administration examined and updated the cost estimate for the Alder Festival Street project. The new estimate was increased by just over $106,000 to a new total of $322,500. This update reflects both the design contingency amount and an increase for higher inflation. Overall, the administration expects the continued price uncertainty and costs rising faster than inflation due to global supply chain problems will continue to make it difficult to estimate construction costs. For the funding recommendation, the administration recommends allocating ARPA funds in the 2023-2024 budget for the top three projects in the amounts shown on the slide. Because of the difficulty in estimating pricing and supply costs over the next biennium, the administration is also recommending that the remaining ARPA funds be reserved until after the projects have completed their bid process. Once that process is complete, the administration recommends allocating any remaining funds to the ARPA-funded community park project through a budget amendment. Generally, there are three options for the city council. The first is to accept the recommendation. The second is to include a different transportation project in the allocation. And finally, the council could allocate the remaining ARPA funding to a different project. In terms of timing and next steps, with the adoption of the budget scheduled for later this evening, the administration is requesting the council's direction tonight on what allocation to include in the budget.
Thank you, Jean.
This is the final slide for the presentation. It just shows the proposed motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jumped in there a little quick. Okay, thank you for putting the proposed motion up. Questions from council? If there's no questions, would someone be prepared to make a motion? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to direct the administration to incorporate ARPA funding for the 2023-2024 budget for the following projects and amounts: $880,000 for the transportation safety bundle, $388,500 for the Front Street Streetscapes, $322,500 for the Alder Festival Street.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Joe, would you like to address the motion?
I would. Thank you. First, I want to thank the administration and staff, Jean Paul, for putting this together. 400 responses is pretty impressive for one of our surveys. And so we did get a real feel for what the community was looking for and what they prioritized during this process. So I'm in support of the motion, and I think that the items are pretty important for safety in the sense that the transportation safety bundle in particular kind of struck me because my kids are starting to walk to and from school and leave the house and go places. It's kind of scary. My son just said, hey, I'm going to go out and clean gutters on Squawk Mountain. And I said, okay, well, go ahead and do that. The point is that the kids that are in our community and the people that are walking about need to be safe on the streets. And Front Street South by the food bank is a little bit dangerous when you have that safety area. I'd like to see that improved, and I think there's thoughtful consideration for the items that are in here, and I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Deputy Council President, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Thank you very much. Councilmember Joe, well said. City staff, well done all around. I'm in complete agreement that I'll be supporting this motion tonight. My only comment is that if the funding that we've put aside, this remaining $409,000, isn't used as the bidding process kind of informs what the true cost is actually going to be, I think it should continue to be used on mobility projects as opposed to reallocating it for parks. We had a long discussion back in June about where these dollars should go, and the administration came back and proposed $2 million for mobility projects, which the council at that point felt better aligned with the recommendations and the intent of the Capital Finance Community Task Force. So I think that I'd like to see that remaining balance used in the way that we had talked about, but otherwise, well done and in complete support. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I think I, much of what I was going to say is what Deputy Council President Hall said. I appreciate leaving an amount at the end of this considering the economic times that we are in, but I think the feedback that we heard throughout the process was very clear that the money, if possible, should be going to mobility projects. And I think the community's feedback was very clear that these smaller safety projects are really important. And I read over all of the comments. There were quite a few that mentioned adding a crosswalk on Sunset at 6th that the trail had. And I think there are quite a lot of opportunities like that, that assuming we can get them done in the time period would absolutely be my preference over having the funding default to a park situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
So I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the people who structured the questionnaire at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. When it came before us, I expressed some concern that this might turn out to be a popularity contest, people voting for the projects nearest to them, and that did not happen. And I think that it was structured very well. I did take it myself, just because I was interested in how it was going to be presented to the public. And I really appreciated the clear description of each project. I really appreciated the way that the question was asked, why are you voting the way that you're voting? I think it was structured in a way that helped people to be thoughtful respondents. And therefore, we got a lot of very useful information. As Council President Walsh said, we got a lot of very useful information out of the survey. So I will be in support of this as well. I think, I hope we do this again, again sometime, if we have a bundle of money. I think this would be, this is a good start at really listening to our community. And I agree with Councilmember Joe, the number of participants is very impressive as well. So I do support the motion and commend everybody that was involved in the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Any other comments? Sorry, Councilmember?
Thank you. I agree, I will also be supporting this motion. I also agree that the survey was well done, provided us with all the information we needed to support this and to know that the community supported these projects. I also wanted to voice my support for using the $409,000 that has been put aside for mobility projects, not for the community park project, as is suggested in our presentation this evening, because I think from this survey, it was really clear that people want more of these, more of these transportation safety-oriented projects. That was the overwhelming message from the survey, at least for me. That's why most people voted the way they voted in the survey and why they put that bundle of safety projects at the top of their list. So I think we should put money towards those sorts of projects, and I think there's no shortage of options for how we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and reread the motion. Direct the administration to incorporate ARPA funding in the 2023-2024 budget for the following projects and amounts: $888,000 for the transportation safety bundle, $388,500 for the Front Street Streetscape, $322,500 for the Alder Festival Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item under, on our agenda this evening is audience comments, and this is the time when members of the public can address council in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, please press star three. And if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room, not seeing any public in the room this evening, I will ask for speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. There's also a public hearing tonight on AB 8402, which is the 2023-24 Budget Ordinance. And comments on this item must be made under the public hearing that's occurring later in the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening for general audience comments?
Yes.
So for those making comments tonight, please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while it's not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone for virtual attendees, or step to the lectern if you're here in person. State your name, address, relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank everyone for taking their time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who's signed up to speak?
Yes, the first commenter is Christy Triple. Christy, I'm making you a panelist now, and also I'll be sharing my screen to show some material Christy provided in advance of the meeting.
Hi, welcome, everyone. Greetings, council members, Madam Mayor, and community. I'm Christy Triple with Raleigh Properties, and my address is 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite 1. First of all, I want to say thank you to Chief Clark for your incredible service. I wish you the very best in retirement, and I love all the proclamations tonight. It's so fun and a strong reminder of how we're all connected. So tonight, I wanted to share a few inspirations from a recent sustainable infrastructure policy tour I went on to Denmark with 33 people, which was a mix of elected staff, developers, engineers, utility leaders from here on the greater east side. Grateful for the invitation from Mayor Robinson of Bellevue, given I participate on Bellevue Chambers Policy Group, and because our plans for High La Crosseing and Raleigh Center and the Development Agreement were really forward-thinking at the time introduced. And our council, in particular our council members, Marts and Joe, helped create that vision, so thank you. So as you know, a lot of the issues the U.S. grapples with is towns built based on the car, not ones obviously faced by European countries. But the fascinating thing was everyone in Copenhagen was on the same page with respect to climate change. In 2011, and again the following year, they were faced with a severe cloud burst that created a thousand-year storm event and flooded many residential areas. From that time, there's been a significant investment in stormwater retrofits, energy utilization, and sustainability initiatives. Public-private partnerships are paramount as competitions begin, as are competitions to design new buildings and infrastructure that pushes the limit. Everything has a dual purpose or more. Next, please. And this is an image of Copan Hill. The plume is actually steam, not smoke. Next, please. This is Copan Hill, which is a garbage incinerator. It serves five cities. It heats 90,000 homes. It's a ski hill, a climbing wall, and a reminder to all to reduce waste. Next, please. Public plaza, stormwater infiltration, and infrastructure are places where people want to be. The images on the left and the right are light rail line with generous open, green open space, pollinator gardens, a beautiful plaza that people can gather and wait as they get ready to use the line. The center picture is where one of the residential areas was flooded. They removed a parking lot, replaced it with an educational storm park, community gathering place to play, and there's even a World War II bunker that was retrofit to serve as music lessons and community gathering spaces that maybe after hours were loud. Next, please. Light rail, bus, bikes, pets, and water taxi are all connected. Streets are designed with bikes, pets, and cars separated. There's a bike network that connects 26 municipalities. Just about everybody commutes by bike all year long. Cargo bikes are full of kids, dogs, and groceries. It's a common sight. The transportation system is integrated with metro and trains. It's quick and easy to get around. And they've implemented electric water taxis that can run seven minutes between stops, and then they need to be charged. This will be fully baked and operational by 2025 with the entire system electric. Next, please. This is a parking garage. Many of their parking garages play, provide space for play and exercise. This was an amazing community gathering space and park at the top of the garage. The green wall to the left with the open space for play and gardens, the green wall provides stairs to alternately access the top of the parking garage. And the cool thing is, it's a place for exercise. You can push the button on the bottom of the stairs, run to the top, and see how fast you made it. So we saw lots of people utilizing that feature while we were there. Next, please. Buildings are re-in-multi-purpose. Old ones are reskinned to serve a new purpose. The top left is a former grain silo that was converted to multifamily housing. Everybody's got a view there. New buildings are oriented to provide wind protection. Solar panels wrap buildings to produce energy, as you see on the blue building below. It was modeled after a shipping container boat, given its proximity to the harbor. The old and the new is integrated, and buildings and space are designed for people first, cars last. Next, please. So one thing they haven't figured out yet is wastewater and reclamation together. They too are...
Christy, I'm just gonna, I'm not sure how many more slides are, but could you summarize for us?
You bet.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Sorry. So, takeaways, what we do shapes and impacts future generations. Don't let the perfect be enemy of good. Pilot projects are necessary, as is collaboration and innovation. Let's be different and inspire curiosity, design spaces that build community, and we have so many opportunities as a community. So thank you for the time tonight, and Tisha, thank you for your help.
Thank you very much, Christy. Fascinating. Thank you for sharing that with us. City Clerk, are there any other speakers this evening?
Yes.
Yep, 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 yep.
Want to try again?
Yes, we do. Someone who has named themselves executive director, I'll be making you a panelist now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, welcome.
Hi, hello, city council, city staff, community, and Madam Mayor. Third quarter was a very busy time for the Downtown Issaquah Association. My name is Mark Clemens. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Issaquah Association, or DIA for short. We're at 232 Front Street North, Issaquah 98027. DIA welcomed new stores to the downtown, Chick's Shoes, Pine Cove Flooring and Cabinetry, Espresso Stop, and Out of the Box Eco Store. Both performing and visual arts were front and center, as DIA hosted Gas Station Blues, Confluence Music Festival, and three Art Walk and Music Strolls. DIA worked with 10 businesses to host the Summer Wine Walk, and combined these events brought over 6,000 visitors to the downtown and showcased over 75 local and regional artists. The historically hip artisan market continues to be a huge draw for local and handmade gifts. August saw a partnership with the Washington State Geocaching Association, where we brought 165 volunteers from 15 different countries and 14 states for a summer cleanup. DIA volunteers actually logged 3,279 hours during the quarter. DIA continues to foster good working relationships with the businesses, including weekly and monthly, monthly interactions. During Welcoming Week, DIA worked with the Issaquah Library and 18 other businesses on a story stroll. Cat Stevens Peace Train was placed in business windows, enjoyed by over 100 families as they strolled downtown. DIA continues to support and educate businesses on topics such as safety, retail loss prevention, staffing, grant opportunities, and public works projects. Over the last three months, DIA has promoted or supported over 100 downtown businesses and organizations. DIA managed to pilot Outdoor Dining Program, Front Street Restaurants Japan, Ginger, and Crowbar, that saw over 700 customers, and also placed over 100 flower baskets on Front and Sunset. In partnership with Issaquah Rotary, DIA produced a 2023 calendar that features locally-submitted photography. 16 local businesses supported the project, and the calendar is currently available for $20, and is available at DIA and Rotary events. DIA worked with Visit Issaquah to deliver regional promotion using LTAC grant money, and during Salmon Day's lead-up, worked with local businesses in the Chamber of Commerce to deliver parking passes and communications between the business owners downtown. And finally, DIA proudly supported and sponsored other service organizations, including Lakes of Mammoth State Park's Parker Deli and The Hatchery's Salmon on Sunset. I have five upcoming programming events to share. There's a downtown cleanup this Saturday, November 12th, 9 to 12. The Historic Shell Holiday Shop opens November 25th, with shop local Saturday, November 26th, and artist... and Artist Sunday, November 27. And the Farm Fresh Market is on Saturdays from 9 to 12 at Historic Shell Station. Caroling at the Depot also returns 4 to 6, December 8. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the update, Mark. Is there anyone else signed up? City Clerk, are indicating a desire to speak?
Mayor, we do have a few other members of the public who are attending virtually, but I don't see that any are indicating a desire to speak right now.
Well, I would like to thank our speakers this evening. We heard some very interesting information on innovative urban planning ideas from Denmark and received the Dia Quarterly Update, as well as a list of upcoming events. So thank you both for sharing that. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov, and I'm going to turn it over to Council President Walsh to see if she has any email comments to summarize on tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received a bunch of emails over the budget season, but I'll just go ahead and summarize those that we received in the last week, since we have the budget ordinance on our agenda tonight as AB 8402. Over the last week, we've received several comments about the Confluence Park Eck House project that was recommended as part of ARPA funding in this budget. Emails expressed concern whether the project allows for historical preservation of the Eck House, and I would note while this step that we're considering is just a budget allocation, there will be plenty of community feedback opportunities in the next year during the design permitting phase of this project, but some of the comments did express disagreement with voting on the budget without that clarification at this time. And that concludes the comments. Nope. I'm done, Tisha, I'm done.
You are cut off.
I'll take it.
We're having some fun tonight. The next item of business on this evening's agenda is Committee and Regional Reports, and we'll be starting with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On November 8, the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting to discuss ID 1299. We'll be looking at the Intelligent Transportation Systems Plan. Also on November 8, the Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee will be meeting. And if you'd like to join that meeting, you can go to the website and log onto the Zoom call. November 15, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is meeting, and that meeting is tentative, however, right now, as we may not be able to get a quorum, so please consult the calendar before trying to find that meeting. And then the day after, 1116, the Cascade Water Alliance Board is meeting, and I've been asked to attend that meeting as an alternate, as the mayor will be unable to attend. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. On October 19, I attended the King County Regional Transit Committee. Of note, Metro's daily ridership in September averaged 234,000 riders, up from 218,000 in July, so there's just been this strong and steady return of ridership. The RTC voted unanimously to continue the $1 lift fare for low-income riders through 2023. The fare was reduced from $1.50 to $1 at the beginning of the pandemic. On October 28, I participated in a listening session with Eastside City Human Services staff members. It was hosted by the Eastside Human Services Forum and is regarding the conversations that we're having with the Alliance of Eastside Agencies. Eastside Human Services Forum and AEA leaders are meeting again on November 22 to continue that dialogue. Also on October 28, I participated in an Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting on 2023 Legislative Priorities with Mayor Herbig and Councilmembers Zahn, Kritzser, and Howe, and I will share draft priorities with the council after our next ETP meeting, which is scheduled for November 18. And then finally, on November 3, I attended the Healthier Here Governing Board Meeting, discussion centered on the 2023 budget, getting ready for adoption at the December meeting, which is scheduled for December 1. And then, just a small note, on Friday, I attended the Eastside Baby Corner fundraiser, at which they announced their new name, which is Kid Vantage. So this is really a success story for a business that started and was grown right here in Issaquah. It now serves almost all of the Puget Sound region, and because of that, they no longer want to be called Eastside Baby Corner and changed their name to Kid Vantage. So I thought I would share that information, because I think that's wonderful news. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. The City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on November 1. We had two items. The first one was ID 1282, Eastside Cities Interlocal Agreement for Climate Programs. This is a proposed interlocal agreement between the cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Mercer Island, and Redmond to formally establish a partnership to advance progress on our climate action plans and climate change and energy goals. This would supplement but not replace the K4C, the King County's Climate Collaborative, and it would not preclude parties from pursuing their own programs. It's really just to help us save money and get more things done. We did have a discussion on how costs would be allocated. There are no fees or costs associated with entering into the agreement, and then participation in joint programs or undertakings would result in costs, and those would be split among the participating parties. And after that discussion, the committee unanimously recommended approval of this, and we felt that it could be on consent, and this is expected to return to council in December or January, after the details have been worked out with the other partners, but we were enthusiastic and thought it sounded like a great program. The other item on our agenda was ID 1237. This was the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and the committee did agree with the staff recommendation on the items, but I thought that I would save us from hearing me explain our conversation twice, because this is expected to return to full council on November 21, so I'll save our detailed conversation summary until then, although I did actually write it out, and so if you have any questions about what we did, I could take those potentially at good of the order if there's questions. The next meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee will be on December 6, and we have one item on the agenda, and that is Title 18 Land Use Code Consolidated Draft. So the end is in sight for Title 18, which is our very longstanding, very important project to update our land use code. And then I have one other upcoming meeting. There's upcoming meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council for Wyret 8, which is our watershed, on November 17 at 2 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is meeting this Wednesday, notice a Wednesday, not a Thursday, at 4 o'clock at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters on Newport Way. Two items of regular business. One is a final discussion on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Strategic Plan, and the second is a discussion around the 2023 legislative agenda. Additionally, we'll be setting the annual planning calendar for the board for the coming year. Two additional items of note. One is, Eastside Fire and Rescue is going to be recognizing and sending Chief Clark off to his next adventure, so that should be interesting. So the board meeting itself starts at 4, but the chief recognition and farewell is going to be at 3 o'clock. And then finally, and I think most interesting, is we will be issuing the oath of office to incoming Fire Chief Ben Lane. So that should be great. Anyway, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PSRC GMPB met on Thursday, November 3 at 10 AM. No action was taken. SCA Pick will be meeting Wednesday, November 9 at 7 PM. Online meeting only. No action is currently planned. And on Tuesday, November 15, the Services Safety and Parks Committee will be meeting at, I believe, 6:30, I think, 6:30, and the agenda has not been finalized, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Holm?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Fantastic, thank you. Last week, I attended the King County Affordable Housing Committee, where we adopted their legislative agenda, and then kind of came to a little bit of a conclusion on some of our work on the jurisdictional by-income housing need by agreeing to recommend Option 3, which is kind of a weighted version. So Options 1 and 2 was really, do we want everybody to grow at the same rate across all of the needs, every city, or do we want everybody to achieve the equitable end? So people who don't have as much affordable housing have to play catch-up while areas in South King County don't have to produce or focus on producing as much affordable housing. And so we ended up with Option 3, which is a weighted version on, a weighted version of the plan that focuses on achieving those equitable ends. And so we're recommending that to the Growth Management Planning Council, because we are a recommendation body to a recommendation body, so we don't actually do any voting. For our next meeting, we're going to be discussing further recommendations on the CPP amendments, particularly focusing on how cities can be held accountable for actually achieving the growth that they say they're planning on, and whether that accountability should be more focused on, did you implement the plans that you said you were going to, or did you achieve the growth that you said you were targeting? And so that's a big debate on the city side. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President. The next item on the agenda this evening is the Mayor's Report. So there will be an executive session scheduled this evening to discuss the lease sale of property per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NC, and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI, and these items are expected to take a total of around an hour. No action is anticipated in open session. Tonight, City Council is anticipated to vote on Issaquah's first-ever biennial budget. A biennial budget process provides numerous improvements to our previous annual process, allowing the city to be more efficient with our resources and to plan for our financial stability further into the future. In the off-years or odd-numbered years, the city will not go through such a large budgetary process, but will still have the opportunity to make smaller adjustments along the way, including a mid-biennium budget update next fall. It will also allow time for a more robust capital planning process in the odd-years, aligning with the city's every-other-year capital improvement plan development. Transitioning to a biennial budget process has been a longstanding goal of the city, and I'm very excited that tonight we will make it a reality. I want to give an update on the water main break and an emergency purchase that had to require for that, that was required for that. Early last week, there was a second large water main break near 1745 Northwest Mall Street in the vicinity of the Issaquah Honda Cabota, west of State Route 900. The broken section of the main has been isolated, but localized repair proved more difficult than is typical. Honda Cabota and a few vacant commercial buildings were without reliable water or fire service. Per the city's financial management policy, the city administrator authorized an emergency purchase to fully replace the water main in lieu of making another localized repair. The estimated project cost is $120,000 to $150,000, and I want to give a big thank you to the Public Works team for such a quick response, a quick and dedicated response to this emergency. On the consent calendar tonight is AB 8492. It's regarding the Human Services Grant Recommendations for the 2023-2024 cycle. This bill seeks authorization from council to approve these grant allocations, which have been included in the 2324 citywide budget. The Human Services Commission reviewed 81 applications. The commission used the recently adopted Human Services Strategic Plan to guide the review and recommendation process, and is recommending funding of 42 programs whose focus areas include physical and behavioral health, housing continuum, cultural, culture and language access, and community resources. I would like to thank the Human Services Commissioners for their hard work and dedication in providing these recommendations. The City of Issaquah is currently conducting a climate vulnerability assessment to better understand, address, and communicate on the specific threats that climate change poses to the Issaquah community. To shape the assessment, we need to hear from residents, businesses, people who work or go to school in Issaquah, and community organizations. Please be sure to give us your feedback by November 18 online. And there was a council listening session. I want to thank the council members for participating in the City Council Community Listening Session in Talus. It was productive and interesting meeting, and this meeting was one action toward our goal of making Issaquah's government more responsive and accessible to our community. There are a few upcoming community events. There is an open house for Northwest Sammamish Road improvements. The city is adding bicycle and pedestrian improvements on the Northwest Sammamish Road between 193rd Place Southeast and the Lake Sammamish State Park entrance. This is the South Lake Sammamish community neighborhood. Come learn about the project and share your thoughts. The open house is on November 9 from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. It's Greek Manor. There is an Eastside Virtual Job Fair. Are you looking for a job on the east side? Are you looking for a career change? Speak directly to over 45 businesses with thousands of positions at the Eastside Virtual Job Fair, being held November 10 from 10 AM to 1 PM. Visit issaquahwa.gov/jobfair to register or access job boards if you can't attend this event. Light up, the night is coming. Please join the City of Issaquah and special guests for a celebratory tree lighting to welcome in winter. This gathering, whole family, will feature a live reindeer, special treats, the Issaquah singers, and a ceremonial tree lighting. All are welcome to attend this free event on November 19 from 5 to 6 PM at Rainier Boulevard North between Northwest Dogwood Street and Confluence Park. And Coffee with the Mayor is coming back. After a long pandemic pause, Coffee with the Mayor is back. I will be available for community dialogue on November 22 from 3:30 to 5 at 55 Sunset Coffee, and I look forward to engaging with the community. And my last update, City Hall will be closed on Friday, November 1st, for Veterans Day. There will be a memorial ceremony for Veterans Day being held at 11 AM on Friday at the Senior Center. And that concludes the Mayor's Report. The next item of business is the Consent Calendar, and it was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Councilmember Hunt?
Yes, I'd like to consider AB 8497 arch recommendations relate fees and move-in fees under regular business.
City Clerk, should we discuss that after the vote, as to where to put it on the agenda?
Or I think you could do that now as well, if you'd like.
So for the City Council, we have our public hearing next. We can place it on the agenda under regular business prior to the state legislative agenda, or we can hear it at the end, which is preference, if you have a preference. Otherwise, I'm just going to suggest the beginning of regular business. Is that okay? Okay, beginning of regular business. Okay, so there has been a request to move that, remove that item. Are there any other requests to move items from the consent calendar? Okay, with that one item being removed, could somebody make a motion?
Thank you. I would move to approve the consent calendar, amended consent calendar. Yeah.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That carries unanimously. So we will put that item at the beginning of regular business. So moving on to the public hearing, AB 8402, the 2023-24 Budget Ordinance. We will be conducting a public hearing this evening under our regular business, and I'd like to invite Budget Manager Suzy Mansell to present this item. Suzy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in the interest of a full agenda tonight, and the fact that this is far from the first time this item has come to the council, we're going to forego the presentation that was included in the packet tonight. I do want to note, however, that the final proposed budget that's before the council this evening includes just a couple small adjustments from what was presented on the 17th, and these are primarily just shifting the ARPA funds to the appropriate parks and mobility projects that were discussed at the last meeting and tonight. There were no adjustments to any other fund besides these in the capital fund. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the council before opening the public hearing.
Any questions from council? I am not seeing any. So we will now be opening the public hearing at 8:11 PM, and again, for those of you who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand- but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand, and if you're on the phone, press star three, or if you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon there in the lower right-hand corner. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to make comments. I see one hand raised from Kristy Triple, but I believe that is a holdover from the earlier public comment. Kristy, I'm going to unmute you briefly to just clarify that. Were you wanting to make comments under the public hearing as well?
No, that was a hold on from earlier. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I'm just monitoring here because we do have a few members of the public, giving them just a minute. No one's indicating a desire to speak.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed at 8:12 P.M. The City Council will have the opportunity to deliberate and approve the 2023-24 budget later on tonight's agenda. So we will be moving to regular business, and I apologize. City Clerk, what is the AB that was moving down to regular business?
AB 8497, Arch Recommendations Regarding Late Fees and Move-In Fees.
Okay. And can you let the Council know what the process would be for this? Is it, now that it is down here, do we need somebody to make a motion? Okay, we need someone to make a motion. Do I have anyone ready to make a motion?
There isn't a staff presentation planned for this item?
No. No. Would it be appropriate for members of the committee to start us off?
I can make a motion, I just need to look it up if you'll give me a moment. So the motion in the packet is move to take no further action on the Arch. A Regional Coalition for Housing recommended tenant protection actions regarding late fees and move-in fees as recommended by the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Ray. Thank you. Would the motion maker like to start the conversation, or would you like someone from the committee to start the conversation?
Well, I'm happy to just provide a little bit of background for any community members. Just that the, this was an item that was presented to us originally in the last year by a Regional Coalition for Housing, Arch, with some possible ways to take a regional approach to tenant fees and late fees and such. We agreed to move forward on one area of that and did not move forward on the other two, which were the late fees and the move-in fees. However, after that original conversation happened, we heard from other cities who were also kind of in this process and asked that, that the item be taken up again by the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee. They did so, and I'll let them comment on what that meeting was, but at this point, I think just taking it off rather than agreeing to, in a blanket, take no further action along with the consent calendar, I think that it is appropriate to have this conversation. Thanks.
Chair, would you like to have some comments to start the conversation? And then I see we have two microphones also raised.
Sure. So it did come back before committee. One of the differences between the first time that it came back to, that it came from the city and, or the first time it came to committee and the second time was there was a recommendation not to go forward from the administration. We had heard a lot from the community and, you know, really didn't feel that much had changed. It's, you know, some other cities had taken the actions that they wanted to take, but I think that the committee, you know, we discussed it both times and felt that the two other elements from the Arch recommendation really didn't do anything to advance, you know, low and medium-income housing on the east side. And so, you know, combined with a lot of concern from the community, there was nothing that we heard, or that I heard, that really addressed that concern that would have made me feel good about moving forward with those other two elements. And so not having it be anything that would help low and medium-income housing, it really seemed, my personal view is it seemed like an issue that was better suited for Olympia and not for our city council. So I was comfortable proceeding again with a recommendation not to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Hunt, followed by Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. I was reflecting on Chief Clark's comments about getting to yes and, and not saying no because the reason I pulled this down is to say no on this, to vote no on this, but it's also a no on a no-go agenda bill, so I think it's a little bit of an exception. But the reason I pulled this down is because I am going to vote no on this, and the only way I can do that is to pull it down off the consent calendar. I did watch the committee meeting, and I appreciated that conversation. I'm not planning on making a different motion. I plan on respecting the recommendation of the committee, I just came to a different conclusion personally. I have two reasons. The first reason is I find these Arch recommendations to be modest protections that would help some people soften the blow-up economic displacement. It would help some people avoid economic displacement. I do believe that the reasons given by Arch for why they proposed these in the first place are compelling, as well as the reasons that were given in the letter that we received from Eastside for All for why we should support these. I will mention that a Seattle Met article came out on November 3rd. Issaquah is still the highest rent for median-to-better money east side. I believe that we are not immune to the challenges that Arch spoke about, and I think this is modest protections that would make a difference for some people. It doesn't solve everything, but it can make a difference for some people. So the second reason why I thought my colleagues might consider voting no is because I also think that this AB made sense coming out of, as a recommendation from the committee, but if the whole council votes on it, I thought maybe we could do something different, like talk to Arch about this because, or a number of us could talk to Arch about how this has gone. It seems that from the Council's committee meeting, as well as our previous conversations, there's a number of views on Arch's role and how Arch rolled this out, and, and I think it noted in the AB, for example, that the committee also noted the role and mission of Arch as being to preserve and increase the supply of housing for low and moderate-income households in King County. So I think if we want to talk to Arch about this, it would be great if we did that. And I wanted to take this opportunity to suggest, I will volunteer to reach out to the Executive Director of Arch, Lindsay Masters, and maybe we could have a conversation because I also thought it was interesting that we've had this diversity of opinions within this council, and then that diversity of opinions has also played out across Arch's service area. There have been cities that have adopted all of the recommendations, there are cities, our city adopted one part of the recommendation, and then there are some cities that have not considered them, and there are cities that have decided that those recommendations do not work for them. And I think it's especially important to talk to Arch about our process working through this as well because Arch specifically called out that one of their goals for making these recommendations was to create as much consistency as possible. And I spoke about when we, when I sent this back, when I made the motion to send this back to committee as well, I spoke about that I thought the consistency was really important. The consistency seems it will not happen because we have had different cities in the area do different things. And in March, when Arch first wrote to cities about these recommendations, they said that the goal was creating as much consistency in requirements across jurisdictions as possible and advancing our shared mission of keeping people stably housed. And then again, on April 20th, when they sent out the regulations, they again emphasized consistency in local regulations. So I think it would be better to talk to Arch. I think we could make that a more positive or more, we could have a learning experience from this and make it a more positive outcome if we were able to collaborate with them and work better together on these sorts of things. And so I would like to suggest, because these are recommendations that go to city council, that some of us on the city council could talk to Arch, and I would volunteer to, to reach out first, and I thought it would be great to have some council members who have different opinions than me on these, talk with them as well. So that's some food for thought, and thank you to my fellow council members for considering.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I just, a couple of things I wanted to point out, and that is, we had a recommendation from the administration both times that the subcommittee looked at it not to adopt the recommendations from Arch. And the sub, and our, and our committee actually, by adopting the first proposal, actually went against the administration's recommendation. So the second time that it came back. The other, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is, when it was sent back to committee, we were asked to consider how it was being implemented in other jurisdictions, and we really didn't have time to receive any data on how it's working. And so we felt that we don't have enough information. Do these proposals actually help people? We had no data whatsoever to show, to show that case. And finally, one of the recommendations, and I would have to go back and look, forgive me for this, but I would have to go back and look. One of the recommendations, I did additional research before we came into the meeting. One of the recommendations is actually less rigorous than the statewide standards that are already in place. And so for those reasons, we just felt that what we were being asked to do was not a proven solution to reducing rents. And in fact, we had heard from landlords who said, if, if this is passed, I'll simply raise rents in order to recoup the costs that you're taking away from me, or recoup the revenue you're taking away from me. So for all those reasons, we could not see that the recommendations as presented by Arch actually made a difference. And the other constriction, I think, is that when it was returned to the subcommittee, we were told to just consider the recommendations. I wanted to talk about other things that we could do, but that wasn't the directive from the council. The council said, consider, go back and reconsider just the, the proposals from Arch. So if we wanted to have a more wide-ranging discussion, that could have been the directive from the council. So those are the reasons, I think, that when we were discussing it, we came to a unanimous conclusion that this was not the time, we weren't ready, and there wasn't the data to help us move forward on the suggestions that were before us. So I hope that helps a little bit with the discussion. I think we could have, I'd like to know what we could do to help people because obviously, as the highest, highest city in the Pugent Sound region for rental, we need to be thinking about what we could do, but the proposals that came to us from Arch, we did not feel would, would help at all. It might even, might even have a backlash that would hurt the renters in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I just want to kind of build on some of Councilmember DeMichele's comments, and, and the first is to say, this recommendation isn't to say not never, this is just to say not now, and we can always talk to Arch. And so regardless of the action we take tonight, having a discussion with them on how to address making renting a more predictable and a less scary process is something we should certainly do, and we probably should have the discussion with other entities other than Arch, given Arch's, that's not really necessarily their core mission, but I think it's something we should look at. And then I think the other thing, and Councilmember DeMichele hit on this, the changes that were being recommended were very minor compared to what is already covered in state law, and we just didn't know what the unintended or unanticipated consequences of these actions would be. And so we had a fairly brief discussion the second time around, and it was, we think this is, this is the right decision right now. It doesn't mean it's the right decision down the road, and I think it's something we should take up in our work plan for 2023.
Thank you. Any other comments? I was going to see Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Joe. If not, I'm going to go back to Councilmember Hunt. Good? Councilmember Hunt?
I just have a quick question. I think it's a legal question, if it's possible. So I did watch the committee meeting. There was a discussion, I believe it was about the, the deposits of the monthly rent and then comparing the state law. And my understanding from that conversation was that it wasn't a complete subset of, that this was covering a slightly different subset. It was that there is also state law regulating elements of this, but it wasn't exactly that everything in this would be naturally following from the state law. So I just wanted to clarify that because I think there, there was a nuance there. And I understand that state law already does have protections. I just think it wasn't exactly the same thing.
You are correct. The state law is not, it's not as protective. The state law caps move-in fees. It does not have the same cap on the other types of deposit, although both state law and the Arch proposal include payment and installments. So similarities, but they are not, they are not exactly the same. You are correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we move to the vote? And I will reread the motion. Okay. The motion on the floor is to take no further action on the Arch's. A Regional Coalition for Housing recommended tenant protection actions regarding late fees and move-in fees as recommended by the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee. All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
That passes six to win. I appreciate the conversation very much. I think it was good to have everybody to express why they, where they're at at this point in time. I do just want to add a few suggestions on the table. Staff does attend Arch meetings. Staff does have a relationship with the Executive Director, and I think it would be appropriate, if there are council members who would like to do that, please, so that we are having a single voice that is talking with them. You know, City Minister Bob Quitz, you're the one. So I think it would be appropriate to talk about comments, frustrations, suggestions, or whatever you have, but let's do it together. And second, I think one of the things I hope when you have your housing conversation is that you look at the uniqueness of Issaquah and the amount of new stock that we have compared to other cities. New stock is very expensive. It rents out at a really high rate. Have we built more per percentage than other cities? So I really think we have to understand our own landscape if we're going to talk about doing protections. The people most at risk in town are the ones in the older units. So if you want to focus on helping those in need, it's probably not helping somebody who is necessarily in a $4,000-a-month apartment. It's going to be more focused. And so I, I hope as we get into the study phase, we take some time to collect the data and understand the uniqueness to Issaquah, because I've been talking with other mayors about this and the amount of new stock we have, and it rents out at a very exorbitant rate. But thank you for having that conversation. We will move on to the next item under regular business, which is AB 8439, the 2023-24 State Legislative Agenda, Priorities, and Policy Manual. And the action before you this evening is for approval, and I'd like to invite Chief of Staff Tina Eckers to introduce the item.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. I'll keep the comments brief regarding the revised legislative agenda. We took your feedback from the October 17th council meeting. We updated the legislative agenda materials. Exhibit A in your packet shows the legislative, excuse me, the Senior Center Plaza funding requests of $700,000 added to the priorities list. This is part of a larger project, the Veterans Memorial Consolidated Park. And in your packet is Exhibit D, you'll find illustrations, project description, and this is intended to help articulate the ask with legislators. Exhibit E provides minor edits to the policy manual throughout, as well as a late addition. Under Economic Development, we recommend continuing to support local businesses, allowing outdoor alcohol service on public property. This otherwise expires in July. Also, at your, at your last meeting, you asked about the east side fire rescues and the school district's legislative agendas. Their documents have yet to be adopted. However, EFER's legislative agenda is beginning to take shape. However, Efer's legislative agenda is beginning to take shape, and as Councilmember Ray reported, this is on your agenda this Wednesday. Lastly, a reminder of next steps and important dates. Once approved, we'll share the legislative agenda locally and regionally with our partners and others. There's the legislative committee days that will be held November 30th through December 2nd. Your legislative breakfast is scheduled for December 7th, now at Tippett's Manor. And the 2023 legislative session begins January 9th. And to finish, I thank Shelley, our lobbyist, for her great work and guidance on the legislative agenda, and thank you for juggling your other meeting this evening. I know that we probably only have a few more minutes with you, but thank you. Council, if you have any questions, or Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions for Tina or Shelley? Wow, great job. There are no questions. Is anybody prepared to make a motion this evening? Council President?
Thank you. Let's see. I move to approve the 2023-2024 legislative agenda as presented.
Any council, oh, sorry.
Second.
You did that second. Thank you, Deputy Council President. Is there any council discussion? That was pretty close. Council President followed by Deputy Council President.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. I love seeing something turn around from our comments and being able to see every single one of those changes requested in it. I think this presents a good opportunity for us to talk to our legislators, both at the breakfast and throughout the cycle, to present the priorities that we as a city have, are advocating for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. Ditto that. Shelley is the best in the biz when it, when it comes to lobbyists and Olympia, so I appreciate all your hard work on this. Only thing I wanted to add was, just moving into the 2024 legislative session, since I had had some comments last time this was here, that we think about, well, what are the kind of small targeted pilot projects that we can ask for as operating budget provisos that we, that the fifth legislative district in particular has been so successful in securing? So over the next year, I just ask that the administration consider, how can we think about that strategically going into the supplemental session? Thanks.
Great suggestion. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. The motion before the council is to approve the 2023-2024 legislative agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and oh. We'll move on to our next regular business item, which is AB 840. Oh, well, thank you, Tina, and thank you, Shelley, very much for staying with us. And I completely echo the comments that you heard. Great team, great job. Thank you for being so responsive. AB 8403, the 2023 levy and revenue sources. Request before council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and this was last before the city council on October 3rd, 2022. The city council conducted, at which, at which time the city council conducted the public hearing. So I'd like to invite Budget Manager Suzy Mansal to introduce this item. Suzy?
Lou. So again, in the interest of time, we are going to forego tonight's presentation that was included in the packet, but I am, again, happy to take any questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions on the information that was included in the packet? I am not seeing any questions. Suzy? Council President?
I move to adopt ordinance number... Levying property taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2023, on all property, both real and personal, in said city, which is subject to tax, taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Deputy Council President?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. This is for the levy and revenue sources.
Yep.
Fully in support. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments or questions? I do not believe it this time after reread it, since that was a very short comment, so I'm just going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, seven and oh. Thank you very much. The next item of business on our regular agenda this evening is AB 8402, the 2023-24 budget ordinance. The request before council is to adopt the ordinance. And Suzy, you, same thing?
No presentation.
No presentation. Any questions? A motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number... Adopting the 2023-2024 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund, and estimated impact on ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the 2023-2024 fiscal biennium.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Martz and Council President?
You know, I don't, I don't often invoke the, you know, this is my four, now, 13th year on council, which means 14th budget that I've been associated with, but I just have to say how utterly bizarre it is that we got through this as quickly as we did. It's really quite singular, especially given that it's a two-year budget, but it really reflects, I think, the culmination of, you know, having a city strategic plan and revisiting that strategic plan at the beginning of the year and building a budget. You all built a budget based on what you heard from us at the beginning of the year. And so I just, you know, this is so much the easiest budget of the 14 that I've been associated with. And so I just want to thank the administration and council leadership for, you know, basically, to use a mathematical term, you know, sort of integrating everything over time that they heard from us and from the community to make this so easy to move forward with. I, several years ago, would not, in a million years, have, have guessed that a bi, a biannual, our first biannual budget would be so easy to get through. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz. Council President?
Thank you. So I did want to call out that the council president budget letter was included in the agenda tonight. It was buried way underneath the budget, you know, halfway around page, you know, 300, something like that. But reflecting those ideas, I wanted to also thank all of the staff, administration, and council members for the participation in this first biennial budget. In particular, I think we should all get a pat on the back for the good work that we did in preparing early with our budget priority retreat in July. I think we can all agree that that is something that we want to carry forward to future budget season, so put a stamp in the books, that'll be there coming forward. It was really easy to see how that priority setting that was adopted by the administration and really taken into account enabled a particularly smooth budget season. But I also wanted to call out just several items that was listed in the letter for consideration during the coming year or with the mid-year review. That included, we called out the sustainability fund. So in this budget, council chose to keep the solid waste administration fees at 6% for 2023, but we mentioned that we're open to discussing a reinstatement of the 9% fee in 2024 to fund additional implementation of the Climate Action Plan. We also called out capital projects, several projects. One example was TR 068, the Squawk Mountain multimodal improvements, show a dash mark in place of the 2024 funding amounts, indicating that the projected cost is unknown but not zero. And so council recognized that those were future costs anticipated with the adoption of this budget. We also called out the municipal arts fund, noting that lower than historical admission taxes are anticipated to continue, which require a one-time infusion from the general fund. And council discussed revisiting the funding model in 2023 with potential adjustments in the mid-year budget adjustment. We called out the capital improvement plan and expressing an interest in rethinking our project allocations and prioritization framework. And then finally, the affordable housing sales tax. So the budget includes the pilot program for the emergency temporary housing and added a new affordable housing planner position, both of which were funded from the 0.1% affordable housing sales tax adopted in 2021. But I noted that the council looked forward to a full conversation on how we can really prioritize that strategic fund as it grows over the coming years. So with all of that, I just wanted to thank everybody for really great work. I am absolutely in support of this and look forward to moving on with other policy considerations. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. I just want to echo a lot of what's been said. This process has been absolutely superb, and I want to share some thank yous as well. First and foremost, to the administration and in particular, the finance staff for all your hard work on this. I hope, I hope you guys know how much we truly value all the incredible work that you do. So thank you very much for everything. You know, like has already been said, we had a wonderful budget retreat that helped shape this budget. I won't say everything that I had here, because I completely agree with Councilmember Walsh. This is a great model for future budget development cycles, too. But I also did want to touch on two other things. First and foremost, to thank Congress, and I guess the President, for the ARPA funding, for this, you know, great ability for us to invest pretty majorly in our transportation and parks infrastructure. So thanks to that. And then, you know, this budget process, we say we started with the retreat, and it really did, but in other ways, it started before that with the Capital Finance Community Task Force, too. So I want to make sure to call out and thank all the members of that task force. Thank Deputy City Administrator Snyder for shepherding us all along through that process. I think the community should be very proud of this body of work, and I'll be supporting the motion tonight.
Great. Are there any other comments before we move to the vote? Okay, seeing none. The motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 2994, adopting the 23-24 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues appropriation for each separate fund, and estimated impact on fund balances for all such funds combined, city for the 2023-24 fiscal biennium. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and oh. And again, big, big to our amazing finance staff, our Chief Financial Officer, Robert Hamood, our Budget Manager, Suzy Mansal, and our Management Analyst, Dale Markeykrim. You are a fantastic team. Also, Councilmember Martz, thank you for your comments. You are our longest-serving council member and experienced many iterations of this process, but I can think of several council members I would like to thank who no longer serve, who started us out on this journey of finding our way to a more strategic, more focused, more data-centric approach budget, and also this council's desire to add in to retreats and to focus on those community priorities. It's, it's amazing. It's really, truly amazing. So thank you for all that you've done. The next item of business today is Good of the Order. Does anybody have any items for Good of the Order? Councilmember Joe, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Most of you received an invitation to a Human Services reception on November 21st. We pass the Human Services funding tonight, and it gives us an opportunity to thank the Human Services Commission in person. Hope you can all attend. SCA is having their dinner in Renton on November 30th at 5:30 p.m. If you're interested in carpooling, I will be attending that event. Related to AB 8439, legislative agenda item, January 4th, you might want to get this on your calendar, the East King County Legislative Coalition, I always get that, East King County Chambers Coalition Legislative Kickoff Breakfast is January 4th at 7:30 a.m. at the Higher Regency Bellevue. If you're interested in attending that, it's really a good event to go to. There are many electives from around our east side that, that show up along with our legislators, and we get a chance to ask them questions and give a wish list of things that we'd like to see in legislative session. So please put that on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. I just wanted to build on Councilmember Hunt's earlier report on the Planning Development Environment Committee, and just call out, hey, we've got a comprehensive plan amendment vote coming up to main council on November 21st. I found it particularly helpful to watch the PPC meeting, and then I obviously attended the Planning Development Environment meeting. But both of those provide some really good insight on a year-long process that I would encourage you to watch, and of course, do so on two times speed, because what's, what's more fun than hearing somebody in chipmunk voice?
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall?
Always watching two times speed. I agree. Three things I wanted to bring up. First and foremost, since, Mayor Pauli, you brought up the Isquah Senior Center's Veterans Day celebration, I wanted to mention that Isquah Highlands is having one as well. It's up at Blakely Hall in Village Green this Friday at 9:30. So they don't conflict, which is good. I also wanted to quickly summarize the Talis Community Listening Session, so wanted to, a quick thank you and shout out to the Talis Community, all of us council members and city staff, particularly the city staff, thank you very much, who participated in last Thursday's Community Listening Session. Oh, also, a big thanks to the Isquah School District for letting us use that wonderful new space. I hadn't been in that new middle school. That was amazing. This was our second Community Listening Session of the year, our first using the new open house format. So real quick, what did we hear? What did we observe? There were great interactions between community members, city staff, and council members at our open topic tables. It seemed like we were able to connect very deeply with the community during the open house, and in fact, answered most, if not all, questions during the open house. We only had a few lingering questions during the official Q and A, including concerns around neighborhood access for convenience and emergency management, concerns around commercial or commercial-looking vehicles parked in the neighborhood, and concerns around traffic along State Route 900. And because so many community questions and concerns were addressed during that open house, city staff, we're going to be working together to generate kind of the list of topics that came up at each table, so we're all informed about what came up at tables that we weren't necessarily at for the whole event. So take note of anything that came up in any conversations that you had as we put those lists together. And then just quick, moving forward, Council President Walsh and I want to have a conversation about what next year's listening sessions should look like, particularly around how many we should have. So keep that in mind during our city council meeting on December 5th, I think, when we're scheduled to talk about the 2023 city council calendar. And that's it.
Thank you. Anything else for Good of the Order? I have a couple of events, and that's it? Okay. And the November 14th committee of the whole council meeting has been canceled. The November 21st regular city council meeting, the anticipated agenda items include the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And prior to the meeting at 6:30 p.m., a reception will be held in the council chambers lobby to show appreciation for our amazing Human Services Commission. So the next item of business this evening is an executive session, and as earlier announced, the executive session is scheduled this evening to discuss the lease sale of property per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NC, and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI. These items are expected to take a total of one hour, and no action is anticipated in open session. As a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, so we will now enter into executive session at 8:49 p.m. For those who are participating virtually, anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you're welcome to stay in that meeting until it's reconvened. So city clerk, let us know when we're ready to go in. A five-minute break?